President.
Right.
But I'm given to understand that because of the way the bills were introduced, the possibility of amendment language that would give a third chance.
Are we ready?
That's on the table.
You ready? All right, I'm making a motion. Okay, anybody?
I'm making a motion to come out as executive session.
Second.
All right, motion made, come out executive session by Mr. Wilcox, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
I have something I need to adjust with y'all real quick. Last year, when it was time to bill out the individual fire departments for their insurance, it was suggested and put on the minutes then that we use thirteen as the base in any increase in the insurance that the county absorbed to help with the fire departments. Well, last year, that was about a seven percent difference. The county had to pick up about seven percent more because we only charged the fire departments with the thirteen rate, which made the county pick up a little over nine thousand dollars more out of the fire department village. This year, because of the increase, because of getting more equipment and everything, if we still charge them the thirteen rate, we're going to have a fourteen percent increase and that's going to put the county about seventeen thousand five hundred dollars out.
What was the other, the past figure?
Last year, it put us a little over nine thousand out.
Almost doubled.
Seventeen thousand, seventeen five out. If we, so y'all said you would look at it each year. Now, what you could do is you could always base it on the last year's amount, you know, instead of using thirteen as the base each year.
That sounds good. That way, they're not picking up the whole load.
They're not picking up the whole, but we pick up some of the increase and they just pick it up, whatever the prior years was. But because right now, it is set in the minutes that it's thirteen's base, but to be reviewed annually, that's all that you charge.
So, do we need to add this item to the agenda?
Yes, because it's time for me to bill.
I don't see things getting any better for the fire departments, I mean.
Is there a motion to add this to the agenda?
Well, I ain't gonna make a motion, nobody wants to do it, I mean.
Have you, have you pretty much received the audits from all the departments?
Not all of them, but we have received quite a few. Probably about six of them. Yeah, we've got in at least six to seven.
And this, and this is something that would be deducted from what used to be called their insurance rebate money?
Yes. When I said, when I billed the departments, we have about four that go ahead and cut a check, pays the money. The remainder of them, what I do is I reduce their end of the year money by the amount that, yes.
So, if we don't, if we don't put this as a form of motion, it just stays at thirteen? We don't?
If you don't do anything, it stays at the thirteen year.
And this, and your proposal, or not, your...
Last year, by keeping the thirteen year, it cost the county another nine thousand three hundred dollars. This year, by keeping the thirteen rate, it will cost the county another seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
What would it cost if we used the fourteen rate?
Six thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, eight thousand.
It would cost us...
Eight thousand.
Yeah.
Stay the same.
Which is about...
But it's, which is, which is still an increase to our volunteers.
It still would be a slight increase. You know, many years ago, they paid a low percentage in the county. It was almost like twenty-five and the county picked up seventy-five. Over the course of the years, it began to pick up. We incrementally increased it until before, back in twelve, they were actually paying one hundred percent of their department's inventory, you know, the insurance for that. And then, last year, it was suggested that we leave it at thirteen's rate in order to help them some. So, that's where it is now too, y'all, if we review it. If you want to stay at thirteen, we pick up an additional.
Let me just ask, let me ask Mr. Parker, he was on a board south of the bank, and what do you, how do you think, what do you think about this?
How would they receive it?
Anytime there's an increase, I mean, you know, they're gonna...
Right.
I, I, I think there's, you know, with the volunteer guys, there's a, they have a chip on their shoulder and a justified chip, in my opinion, because they're volunteers.
Right.
And I think that whenever they hear an increase, they feel, their knee jerk reaction is, they're not helping us, they're not helping us, they're not doing what they should, and we're volunteers. So, I mean, and I'm certainly not saying that they can't afford it or that they can't afford it, but that's just the initial knee jerk reaction. Anytime the county increases something or takes something away, they, you hear the, we're volunteers.
Well, and I, I guess I'm kind of like you, you know, it's, being a volunteer is exactly what it is, a volunteer. So, all of a sudden, it could be a...
Laura, isolation here, let's move on.
I'm ready to.
That, that's fine, I just needed to know so I can send the bills out to them.
Well, I hate to...
I did tell them last year that it was a reduction, the board was basing it on the thirteen amount, that it would be reviewed annually, and...
They just gonna get a whopper of a bill increase the next year if we don't adjust it now.
Right. I think we need, I mean, I'm, I'm leaning towards going and adjusting it now because next year's gonna be worse.
Well, for quite a few years, they've paid a hundred percent. They got up to where they were paying.
You got more, like me.
And then, it was just last year, we had a break.
Well, what if we, I mean, what if we meet them in the middle instead of the thousand, we go to five hundred? And I know, does that ease, would that ease the burden?
I, I think any, anytime that, and this is just from last year.
Right.
When I was on board. Anytime they see that they're being helped, you know, they're, and then that's, that's the way with anything, if it's being split, if there's an increase that's being split, that they feel like, okay, they're doing their part.
Right, trying to help.
So, I do think that, that obviously eases the pain.
If, if the word gets out that make sure that it's not a thousand versus five hundred or whatever, if that's the way the board would choose...
You're trying to, so you're saying just make it even, pick up our percentage on top of the increase? Whatever the increase is, pick up our same percentage as ever what it was before, which would be, be more? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No?
One thing Laura suggested was maybe we can do the year prior.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that won't be but...
The effect would be essentially the same as proposing a percentage. If you move it to, if you roll it from thirteen up to fourteen, then they're gonna pick up the increase between fourteen and fifteen, which is gonna be about the same amount of increase as we saw between thirteen and fourteen. So...
Which would be dollar wise, what would it be?
About eight thousand.
And that's what they picked up last time?
Well, last time, we kept it at the, fourteen, we kept it at the thirteen rate, okay?
We had forty-seven thousand.
Which meant a seven percent increase to us. They did not get that seven percent increase. It went to us. This year, it's another seven on top of that, it's fourteen. So, basically, they get about a seven percent increase off their thirteen rate. Larger departments, like the reservoir, of course, would pick up a bigger portion. Smaller ones that have a smaller amount, seven percent wouldn't mean as much to them.
What kind of an impact would it have on, on the budget that we have adopted for the coming year?
Eventually, it will. I mean, if we keep at the thirteen, and we keep taking the seven or five percent increase, we're going to, we're gonna take a hit over the years. Granted, you know, seventeen thousand is not a lot, but in a budget that is small like that, and in a village that hasn't changed in years, it's small, it'll start having any effect.
Are you talking about overall seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand per station?
No, overall.
Okay.
Overall. And then next year.
Just a call.
You know, it's...
If our policy is that we simply roll forward every year?
Yeah.
We go from thirteen to fourteen, from fourteen to fifteen, et cetera. If we continue, if that's just our policy, then I'll just, and I'm asking you guys for that, unless there's some significant increase that dramatically impacts the numbers. But by doing it that way, then you, you eliminate the possibility of a large increase at some point affecting the departments. For instance, if we keep it at thirteen and you just keep moving forward, then let's roll it out to eighteen or twenty. By the time you get ready to...
Just say pick up...
Reduce the impact on the county, they're going to feel it big time.
That's right.
So, if you roll it forward annually, then the county is picking up the annual increase basically a year ahead of time and helping to soften, soften the blow for the departments.
Okay. So, over what they paid last year, if we do just like you said, Craig, go to fourteen, what would be the amount difference they'd be paying more this year?
About seven percent.
Yeah, a total of about eight to nine thousand dollars shared among all the departments. A total of eight to nine thousand dollars. So, it depends on how much...
So, that's eight to nine thousand dollar increase shared over all of them versus from last year?
Correct.
Correct.
Instead of the county...
You don't know how to break down, then, yeah.
No, some of the departments...
The ones who added equipment's the ones that's gonna get the biggest hit.
Right, the ones that, right, have some newer and some bigger equipment. Some of them last year were, the reduction that they got were around four hundred dollars, some of them was a thousand dollars.
Which, you know, it shouldn't be expected. If you get a new fire truck, you should expect to have to pay more insurance for it.
Well, I don't know what all the equipment they have, but you know, you encourage them to go out and, and utilize these grants to get equipment and to keep it at the level that they, they have the fire, volunteer stations or any of them. And so, it's kind of, they're able to get the grants to get the thing, get the equipment, it's not as much cost to us, takes it off of us.
Now, any of the fire trucks that are on the county asset listing, we pay for those.
Right.
Well, this is just their equipment.
This is their inventory.
They're, they're personally...
This is their inventory.
That's what I mean. So, really, it's been a big savings for us to not have to go buy a...
Property, I mean, there's a whole lot to do.
...evulater or whatever they have.
So, basically, you would take the nine thousand dollars and divide it by seventeen departments depending on, depending on their pro rate of share.
Right, correct.
It doesn't sound like it would have a major impact.
Right, if we just use the prior year always as the base, like Craig said, because if not, if you leave thirteen and you come out here to eighteen to twenty, and then the county decides, ooh, it's a big amount we're paying, we really need to channel this back through the fire departments, you either have to start a series of years of incrementally adding it back like we did many years ago, or they get a whopping bill.
It's about five, six hundred dollars is what we're talking about.
Well, we kind of, it would kind of clear up that, and at the same time, if one of those or some of those departments need something and they don't have it in their budget, then they always come to us with, up for additional support, so...
I don't believe I've ever seen y'all turn any of them down.
I don't believe I've ever seen us turn one down either, that was something that was necessary to...
To justify it, yeah.
Save lives and property. We gotta remember, once again, they are volunteers.
Mm-hmm.
So, I know they hate to see an increase and they hate, you know, anytime we pass anything along, you know, I guess they...
Well, the presentation back to these guys needs to, the lead sentence needs to be, as you are aware with everything else in our economy, insurance is going up in cost. You start with that lead in sentence. And I think you also explained that the board has determined that it is a prerequisite that Rankin County contributed towards that increase in cost, and we are continuing that policy to do that. But you will see a slight increase in your insurance premium.
So, how would the motion need read?
Either add it, and then just simply establish that our policy for reimbursement of, is this personal property insurance premium or...
Well, it's, right, is there...
It's nothing to do with any real property in any kind of...
It is their, their, their corporate account and their umbrella policy and...
So, this would be their GL?
Yes, it is their complete liability.
To establish that the policy, our board's policy with respect to reimbursement of volunteer fire department general liability insurance coverage is that the prior year's premium will be the base amount for the premium, and that any increase for the succeeding year will be reimbursed to the county by the department.
I'll put that in the form of a motion, add that item to the agenda.
Second.
Motion to add that to the agenda, Mr. Johnson, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? More discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Make a motion to approve.
Setting policy to base it off prior year?
I can't repeat what I've heard.
All right, I'll second.
Motion made by Mr., by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. I believe I have more volunteer fire departments out there than any one of us.
All right.
I don't know.
Did you think that would come?
What?
Mr. President, if we could add the item that we talked about in executive on the Star Road Bridge, this is to set just compensation, we would need a motion to add that item to the agenda.
Make that motion.
Nobody second this, please.
I'm sorry, Jay, I didn't...
Please second.
Motion to add the Star Road...
Bridge project.
Bridge project compensation. I have a motion to that. I said I had a motion by Mr. Wilcox, second Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The motion would be to establish just compensation for the Star Road Bridge project at twenty-three cents per foot for permanent right of way and three cents per foot for temporary construction easement.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Wilcox.
As embarrassed as I am, I second that motion.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The resolution, have we voted to do it yet?
No, sir, we have not, but the resolution has been prepared. This is a resolution that was, it was actually requested by Mark Baker. If, when I say request, it was presented as something that would probably be a good idea. Jay alluded to it, the splitting of Circuit Court District, and I want to be clear that we stay on target about what we're talking about here. The resolution that is, that we recommended is a resolution that deals with the Circuit Court District. Presently, Rankin County is in a combined Circuit Court District of Madison County, the Twentieth Circuit Court District. That Circuit Court District has two judges, Judge Chapman, Judge M. Figur. Both judges go back between the counties and handle cases in both directions. That district has one DA, Michael Guest. That district has separate offices for the district attorney. There is a Madison County staff that he has, and there's a Rankin County staff that he has. To my knowledge, there's not a lot of transference among the staff, I don't think there's any... The guys from the Rankin office don't go up to Madison and prosecute for cases up there. So, he has separate staffs, those have separate supporters, they have separate requirements as it relates to employment calls and other calls associated with staffing and operating those functions. So, they're treated like two separate offices. But, there's one DA, and there's one pot of money that operates to fund all of that operation, okay? So, the idea is introduce legislation that would split the Twentieth Circuit Court into separate Circuit Courts districts. So, you have a Twentieth, which is only Rankin County, and a new Twentieth, which would be only Madison County. They would get their own DA up there. They would also get two judges dedicated to them instead of just one. So, that's sort of the idea behind the legislation, as I understand it. What has developed now is instead of splitting the Circuit Court District, the thinking is keep it together, Madison and Rankin County, keep it with one district attorney, but allow for one additional judge to cover both counties. Not, as I understand it, not dedicated to any particular county. This would be just like the other two judges now operate, get one additional judge. Now, there would be, what's the impact for you guys? Anytime you add a judge, you're looking at adding the possible costs associated with the court administrator for that court. While AOC pays the lion's share of that salary, the law allows for the supervisors to pay supplemental to that. You are doing that in Circuit Court and Chancery Court and County Court now. There would also be a bailiff, that's gonna be all on the county. It comes through the sheriff's budget. So, there's, there's that impact. Those are at least two positions that I can think of right there where you're gonna see, you're gonna see a definite impact from an added judge, and also, you're gonna have a court reporter. And as you know, there's legislation moving through right now, ten forty-nine, I pointed it out to you guys, that calls for an increase in salary to court reporters, and it's graduated over time, I want to say it's over like a four-year period, but all of that increase, you can expect to be pushed onto the supervisors. That is not gonna come out of AOC. It's gonna be just like that other salary increase that we saw out of our law clerks and our court administrators last time, where they said, where AOC said, we ain't got no money, but if y'all wanna go ask the supervisors for an increase, you're welcome to do it, and as long as they say it's okay, then you can get that increase.
Yeah.
It's exactly the same way for the court reporters. So, that's coming, okay? So, the conversation...
Nice way to prove it and get it off their back.
Well, no matter what, though, Craig, we're gonna get a third judge, and we're gonna get some of those costs associated with that third judge.
Yes.
So, there's really no downside to us splitting it out and supporting, Madison's wanting this also. They wanna have their own DA, 'cause they know they'll never be able to elect one, 'cause we have the numbers on our side. So, you'd think we will always have a DA from Rankin County.
And, and we know for certain that they support it. Why? Because they executed a resolution of support. They've already done that weeks ago. And so, here's where it is. Basically, Mark told me that his conversations with the decision makers is, we're not really interested in talking to you about Circuit Court Districts and all that stuff, only lawyers and judges are interested in that stuff, so don't bother us with that. And it's, it's a, we need some help getting attention. This resolution would be helpful to get attention of decision makers that more than just the lawyers and judges are interested in this. To Jay's point, if there is a split of the Circuit Court District, like I'm talking about, instead of just adding a judge and keeping the district together, if in fact a bill was dropped and passed that splits the district out, then the impact of Rankin County from a financial standpoint would be much greater. Why? Because separate district attorney's office has to be separately funded by the Madison County Board Supervisors. Okay? AOC obviously is handling the DA side of that, but all those other expenses in there that we're now picking up, and through our DA paying for Madison's work, th- those dollars would stay in Rankin County.
And so, you know, we're generating the majority of the funds to operate the office in Madison.
And it's not just that.
So, those dollars would stay here.
It's not just the available dollars that are worked through the DA's budget, it's not just that. Don't forget that the DA's office gets a nice, healthy chunk of seizure funds, okay? Drug money. Where do you think most of that drug money comes from? It's the I-20 corridor. It ain't going through Madison County.
But they're having a split.
A lot of that drug money that seized in Rankin County ends up benefiting the Madison County...
Here's district, I say. I-20.
It's some of four, it's mostly four, but it's some of three.
You got some of three?
Some of three.
All of us.
I got some too.
Except for you.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, you got... All of us, seven, two.
What, what you're being asked to consider today would be a resolution that's very similar to Madison County Supervisor's Resolution that asks the legislature and shows your support for a complete splitting of the Twentieth Circuit District that would allow... So, you know, you, you got, essentially now, you're sharing two judges, and this legislation would allow for Rankin County to have two judges, two Circuit Court judges. It's only a and another judge, in essence.
Would all those affected be in favor of that? Judges, the district attorney, everybody?
I, I want to be real careful when I tell you this, and so, I hope you are paying attention to how I'm telling you this. Your district attorney has two offices filled with staffers that are important to him, do a good job, he appreciates their work, and so, it's difficult for your district attorney to, to be, to take a position that might appear as though he doesn't appreciate one of his staff operations.
True.
Is everybody clear?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'm clear.
Mark wanted the lieutenant governor's assistant with this, so it's a possibility that he may want us to come over to the Capitol and sit down and tape on this topic. Yeah. So, I think that's the job for the president of board, for sure.
You can go along.
But I, they wanted to go today, but I hadn't heard anything from them, so I'm guessing it's out today. But can we add that motion, that, to the, item to the agenda?
The resolution?
Yeah.
And if I may, I have the resolution prepared, I didn't bring it with me, I apologize. What I would like for us to do is let me get each of you a copy of the resolution, you review it, look at it, if you're okay with it. If you're okay with it, I'd like for Jared to be able to go ahead and execute it up so that we can, if in fact, he has an opportunity to go speak with the lieutenant governor, he'll have something to actually give you.
Okay.
I think you've done a good job of explaining it, I don't see why we couldn't go ahead and adopt the resolution if we agree with the concept.
I make a motion to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion to add this item to the agenda by Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Keith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I make a motion to do a resolution in support of separating or creating a separate Circuit District.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Wilcox. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I have one more thing.
Briefly, I was just gonna add about the chancery judge situation because that does impact us, all of our planning and arranging that we're working on these courthouse projects. You, you just need to be aware that that's still out there. I have asked for some clarification on the fact that all of the bills that have been dropped at this point that have to do with judicial redistricting, that's what that's called, all of those bills, none, or none of those bills, I should say, have any reference whatsoever to adjustments to our current chancery judge situation.
Even the Senate bill?
Correct. None of them have any discussion in them on the chancery side. I've asked for clarification, I've asked in light of the fact that supervisors are considering some pretty big decisions that are impacted by the number of chancery judges. Can you give me some direction here? Is there, should we be taking this as a sign, maybe? And I have not received any response to that, and there may be some reason why, but what I did discover on Friday was that the way that the bills were dropped, the sections that are available to be amended includes the, the sections that discuss Rankin County chancellors. So, there is the possibility that at some point during the session, there will be an attempt to amend those sections, that they're there to be amended, is what I'm saying. I just don't know what's gonna happen yet.
Almost a year ago, we voted to do emergency repair on a bridge in Pearl, and we were gonna pay for the bridge, and for whatever reason, I pointy fingers, it's drug out forever. But now, we got where the guy can't get here till May. If we were today to tell him we're ready to get it done, we have two people now, one ready to build a house, another one's fixing to do some remodeling, that live on the other side of the bridge. Is this, do we only have Utah? Is there another option other than them?
No, S and S is on, we've got a bid on for that in our six-month season.
Utah's the only one that's bidding?
Well, what in, S and S?
S and S is on, it's a good bridge, otherwise, you have to go out and you have to get up plans and expect and run time.
What's holding S and S up so long?
Well, it was no fault of theirs, they called and talked to... Well, it was no fault of theirs, eh, they called and then talked to Dale around Christmas, and we weren't ready, so he said, "Go ahead, do what you got to do," and they scheduled work. So, but May is too far out for us to do anything, so how can we speed this process up?
First, we got to get the instrument.
Yeah, right.
We got a, uh, we got a landowner that has gone through some refinancing, rearranging their own loans, and, uh, that's created a hiccup.
Well, there was a, I talked to the mayor, there was an agreement that they agreed to pay them, so he was aware of it, and, uh, but I, uh, short of us being able to come in and replace the bridge, Dale, can we not, uh, just get the bridge in shape to where concrete trucks can go back and forth, so these people aren't held up on this? Yeah. I mean, garbage trucks are going across it every day or every week now.
Garbage trucks, they, they were supposed to be used to look garbage, when they were garbage.
Oh.
They were plus about that, they've been on it all year, by the way.
The garbage folks?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
And, you know, to say, it may sound a long time off, I, I understand that, and I know it is for people who are wanting that, but you got to realize that we've got to build the approaches on both sides before he can actually build the structure. So, I've got clearing and channeling and, and that kind of work to do. And this is, you know, weather conditions this time of year, you know, we're not, it may sound a long time off, it may not be that far off as far as us being ready for him to, to get here. Now, as far as showing that the other bridge, uh...
Yeah.
Not really, not sure, just, you know, doing something, we looked at, would you say, Tim?
Yeah, I don't know, we got to look at it again.
I don't know.
I don't know if I'm going to get there.
So, is it not where a concrete truck can go across it? I know when Bud Overby was live, he said it was okay, really, but that was him. He's not an engineer, obviously.
No.
And I'm not asking you to put a stamp on it, I just, uh, I hate us holding these people off that are needing this construction done another three months. Actually, it's going to be four months, because that's just when they get started. No telling how long it'll take them to finish it.
See, it depends on what kind of project it is, Jay, but they may have to have a concrete pump, too.
Oh, no, one house already had to pump concrete, and luckily, it was the first house right across the ditch, and she was not happy, because she spent an extra $2,000 having to pump concrete, what, 1,800 feet? Something like that?
Can they get?
Yeah.
Let me ask you this, Jay, and I, and this, I guess, I understand what you're saying is, does it come down to, wha- are, are you asking for our people to work on it? Or are you asking for funding, or how's that?
Well, we've already voted to do it.
Right, we've already voted to do it.
I just want to move the process up.
So, how, what are you saying to move the process up?
I'm just wanting some help.
I don't understand why it's taking S and S, because how big a bridge is it?
It, well, it's a little single frame, but it, after the engineering and all, we're going, in the footing where we need to be, it's going to be a free span, and we're furnishing all of it. We have all the components on the yard and used material and all that's most of the caps combined, standard stuff, and we were going to use those, which cut the cost way down on the bridge.
But do we have to go, you said that's the only company we have that gave us a bid. Well, if we did an emergency purchase, can't we just go select the contractor to do it?
Under an emergency, yes, and the issue now becomes, Jay, whether...
A year later, is it an emergency?
Yeah, I, I think we got a problem.
Seems like that, how would that be an emergency?
Well, they still can't use it.
My understanding is that S and S has, that they had, they're working on, they had some other project in line that they had to get to.
Well, uh, you and Sanford, which is S and S owner, he called me about three weeks ago. So, I'd say three weeks now, but just a little bit, he said, "Well, how are y'all on your bridges?" I said, "I've got three that I want to bid on, but I don't want to, you know, I don't want to get them ahead of you." And I said, "Well, you know, you..." and I hadn't heard anything, so I can't tell you, you know, and I, I couldn't tell the man, and I'll just hold up, because, you know, he's, he's got to do business. I couldn't, you know, good timing, because, you know, we'll be ready tomorrow, so I did not, not have any...
That's right.
And, uh, so, that's just kind of where we are in this deal. We figured it'd probably happen this way, and be as usual.
What, could you look at it, Tim, and, or get somebody at your company to go look at it and see if, because it wouldn't take many trips of a concrete truck going back and forth.
Is it, is it two specific instances that you're trying to accommodate?
Yes.
Well, Dale and I were just talking about over here, not trying to put words in Dale's mouth, but he's got to build the approaches anyway. If those can be scheduled, he can put in a low-water crossing, uh, because the new bridge is relocating beside the existing bridge, so when he builds those approaches, he can lay a pipe in there and just build a low-water crossing, if, if we schedule those two events where they, they happen in whatever week he got that ready, and then that should be pulled back out and finish his approaches for the bridge to be built.
And, you know, I'm sure, as big as, only, one of my, one of them's a house, a new house.
Yeah. The other one's a remodel.
You know, and that's, material is a big thing, uh, it's, on the new house, it's going to be, it's dirt, it's going to be the big heavy loads and it's concrete. But he still has some building materials he's got to come through.
That's true.
We can, you know, put a low-water cross, Tim said something that they can cross, um, build, you know, and it takes about two, three weeks for them to build that bridge once they get here, but we got some other work to do, so that's, um, you know, we could possibly work with them and, you know, get, get them started and, you know, because a house takes a while to build. But that's just kind of where we are.
So, Tim, did you ever look at that bridge? Were you one of them that looked at it?
Oh, yes, yes, I did, I did, I did.
So, is it not safe for, for material lumber trucks to go across it?
You know, I, a truck, I don't think it's going to be, it's the repetitiveness, whether they start and stop on it, there, there's some, uh, because of the, underneath the bridge, what's happening, I mean, I think structurally, the piles are still there, the caps are still sitting on the piles.
Hard, hard. I believe that, you know, part of piles are, you know...
That's right, so, I mean, I, I don't think it's, you know, it, it's the repetitive traffic, I mean, I, I don't, if a concrete truck starts coming across it, it just breaks for some reason, and it puts some force, some lateral force on that bridge, it could have some issues.
Police and speed.
The prob, we, we have to be careful of is, if we say, "Yeah, it looks like it's okay," then everybody forgets that there's a problem with it, and it just becomes a normal little bridge again, and it's not treated, you know, now the truck, the, the concrete truck hits it at 20 miles an hour, as opposed to 2 miles an hour.
So, you said that, that we could do a low crossing, but is that temporary? I mean, like a one week, or is it something that we could put in?
Couple of weeks.
Well, we could, you know, this goes back to, and once I get it clear, we, we got to build roads to be for the approach of the new bridge.
Yeah.
And what we do is just, uh, with that put in a temporary pilot, be low water, if we got a big rain, it probably washes out, we'd have to repair it, but that would give them access to and from, something that would hold them, you know, that weight, that could carry it away.
But is that something you would, I guess, when it rains, it'd wash out, basically?
Yeah.
It does.
Would it impede you doing your work? Would it impede you from doing your work? With that there?
No, because I'd have to, what I'd get, what I'd have to do, put the low-water crossing in, I'd have to do anyway for the bridge approach. All that would do is give them access, give them access until you even got there to start putting in the bridge. That's when it would shut back down for whatever length of time it took him to, to build the bridge.
Aye.
Yeah, I'd have to move a little dirt twice.
Basically, you'd be building approaches like this from the sides for a bridge, but instead, he can do this and not go up as high and come down in the middle to put a small. So, he, he would be moving some dirt twice, and I think he would need additional dirt, but dirt that he's putting around the cover will hopefully be pulled back out and, and make the bridge approaches Maxon County.
Which, you know, if we get in there, we could probably make it work for a while. And, you know, we could, if it worked, we could adjust the bridge building, you know, month, you know, if he got ready and they needed it, um, you know, we might could adjust it out in time, you know, so that they just have the night.
Yeah. It just so happens, one of them, one of them builds as a police chief, too, you know, so...
We did one down, uh, White Road, and y'all built a temporary around it, and it was okay, like I said, unless you got a big rain.
I know we did same with Hollybush. We did that at Hollybush.
We've done that commonly, that, you know, we build...
You had to get the right-of-way easement to put it out there.
Oh, my gosh, that's not even...
But this will go in place where the easement is.
Yeah.
The only, the only drawback here is that when they start building the bridge, you won't be able to, you won't be able to carry heavy load in there for whatever period of time I think they can get the bridge up and running, which...
Our part in all this was, we were just supposed to pay for the bridge, but instead, Craig has had to do a good bit of work to get the right-of-way done, so...
And this is in a municipality?
Yeah. Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure, just to clear it up.
Y'all okay with the low-water bridge? I say less more than that.
Yeah, I think we need to do whatever we got to do to get them built.
I don't think we got any other options.
Do we need, take action on that?
Take action on that at all?
No.
Okay.
Like, y'all've already approved the, uh, construction of the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
And that, and, uh, so this is just an alternative method of, of the bridge, where we're asking him to proceed and to move forward with a low-water approach.
Right. How are we coming on our website on getting everything implemented?
I haven't heard back from Rusty anymore, other than he said, you know, the other day, he said the part about the credit cards, um, as far as we drained out the deposits and all, that was going to be back in my court as to what to do.
So, what are we going to do about that? I mean, I want to be able to schedule our rooms online to book our rooms.
And, and I've talked to Janice, and I've talked to, uh, Trish Granton at the, at the multipurpose, um, we've talked about the reservoir thing, it's just, we can't find an answer right now with the fact that if they come through with their reservation, the, the deposit on the credit card, it's going to charge it to them, and then we're going to have to make, we're going to have to do refunds. Right now, their check is held, and we find them if there's no problems. It's going to be a lot of people that's going to impact having to write two checks, you know, and, uh, a deposit to actually go through, whereas right now, it's just, you know, it's held.
I deal with the same thing over there on baseball fields and everything else. I mean, make it easier, they can do it online, but it's sure not real easy whenever you have a rainout and you have fifteen teams, it impacts, then all of a sudden, you go through the whole process of refund.
Well, you know, there's tons of places to do this already online, other states, I guess we can...
Research and find out how they do it.
Yeah. Because I'm sure they probably do the same thing as far as deposits go.
It can be done.
E-Quine Building, something like that? We talk like at the, at the, uh, E-Quine Building or something?
Nine-one-one, the, the Reservoir Community Center, the...
Marine Field Community Center, all that, everything. Yeah, if you can do it that way, in a perfect world, it works great.
That way, just the all online, and everybody could even see the calendar when it's available.
Right.
Well, the calendar can still be made available without the other process.
It's just the, the refund piece of it is really the snag, I think, it always is.
Well, I would think this company we hired to do this, surely they've done it before, maybe they have some ideas. You know, they're a national-wide company, do business all over the country.
If they do, please share it with me.
Maybe ask, uh, Rusty to inquire with them to see how they, other places handle it? That'd probably be the easiest solution.
I think he's handed it off to Laura.
Yeah. There you go. It's what you get for being the boss.
Jay, you got anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, I have a motion to, where are we recessing? Recession.
I make a motion recess to the twenty-sixth of February.
Motion by Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Bishop, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Craig, would that be all, to have the Pearl soccer...